Good evening, we have returned to open session at six oh three. All attendance to be read in the back of my pages to the flag by member Agnes Gonzalez.
If my life is celebrated in Independence Day, let us be reminded that freedom is a gift to us all. Thank you to all the military men and women who serve our country so that we can have the freedom in the country we love, honor, and respect, the United States of America. It is my pleasure to lead you all in the blessed deed. Let us face the flag, place your right hand over your heart, and say the pledge of allegiance we fight together, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to every parliament, which stands on one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So session report, yes, we have position report on the motion by Agnes Gonzalez and the second side down agreement. Education, the board of education, by the motion of Heidi West to the position of elementary principal within effective day of July twenty third, twenty twenty one. The vote of the four was Carrie Chan, yes, Donna Freeman, yes, Agnes Gonzalez, yes, David Malcon, yes, Eric Menezes, yes. Motion carried. And thank you.
Just one second, just a second.
So may I tell you what, Dr. Mitchell?
Yes. I'm ready now, got two new papers here. Well, good evening, and welcome back to the twenty twenty one, twenty two school year. On Monday, we welcomed our distributorship team back in person. I want to say thank you to the students and families from Alvarado Intermediate, Roland High School, Nogales High School, Yvora Academy, Othwell Academy, and Tellus, Tellus Academy for coming out and cheering us on as we return in person and as a piece of tea. The Board of Education, the Volsa Intervenent, along with Nogales High School ASC, the Gauz High School Cheerleaders. Again, we had students and parents of all grade levels there cheering us on, as well as our drum line. Who can't get into the spirit of coming back to the drum line? So it was a great way to welcome back our leadership team. This summer, we've had a very full summer learning experiences for our students and for our staff. We've had three, we currently have three summer learning programs that are still going on for our students that are ending next week. Our staff has also been engaged in summer learning since the day school was dismissed in June. We're learning about social emotional learning, how to care for each other and our students in a new way. We welcome the back of August the ninth. We've had math trainings, literacy trainings, technology integration, and more. So we are very excited and eager to come back for the start of the two thousand twenty one, twenty two school year. It's also my pleasure this evening to introduce some familiar faces in new places. And so this evening, I appreciate the actions the board has taken. Tonight on the HR report, you'll have some positions that are ratifications of leadership positions that have already started in their new roles and that has been communicated with the board. But I would like to introduce them to you in person and allow them to address you as well. So first, we have Mr. Kurt Schlotter. He is promoted to the position as Director of Technology. And we are pleased to see that we've had an opportunity to have been one of our employees go through many years in our district and the opportunity to serve in a new leadership position. Kurt has also was also very instrumental in our, our leadership team meeting. He has now the new nickname DJ Kirk, so Kirk, welcome.
Thank you, I want to thank the Board of Education as well as members of Cabinet for this opportunity to take this district into a new and powerful direction in technology as we embrace a lot of new initiatives that we started last year during the major pandemics. And so we're excited to push those through and make those come into fruition with our students and teachers on campus. Thank you so much.
Also, my pleasure to reintroduce Johan Schmidt. Johan has served most recently as the Principal at Tellus Academy. But this year, he will be sharing, we've been serving in the role of Principal at Jellicle Elementary.
Good evening, Documental, good evening Cabinet members, good evening Roland Unified Board. I'm very excited to be the Principal of Jellicle Elementary School, thank you for this opportunity. I can't wait to meet our families in person, our students as we start our twenty one, twenty two school year. Thank you very much.
Next is my pleasure to introduce Danielle Villa. Danielle Villa, most recently served in the past as the Assistant Principal at Alvarado Intermediate School. She was recently selected as Principal at Tellus Academy. Danielle also was instrumental in picking up our school year as part of our TLT and REX committee or planning team. And she did an excellent job on Monday in her new, in her new role as Principal and sharing information with us. Welcome.
Thank you, I'd like to express my sincere gratitude to the board and cabinet for providing me with this opportunity to serve Tellus. I look forward to connecting with the families and becoming part of that fighting family and getting to the staff and students. Thank you very much.
And next, we have Monica Gutierrez. Monica Gutierrez has served as the ID Coordinator in other positions throughout our district. And now she's coming forward to be introduced to you as the Assistant Principal at Yvora Academy.
Good evening, good evening, Dr. Mitchell, Cabinet board members. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to continue to work at Roland Unified School District, continue the great things that are happening here, and continue to do the great things that are happening at Yvora and servicing our community. Thank you.
And last this evening, but certainly not least, is the action the board just took this evening. It's my pleasure to introduce Heidi West as the Principal at Rorimer Elementary School. Heidi has served as an employee in our district for approximately twenty years, most recently serving at Hurley Elementary, as one of our dual language teacher. And so she's, she's here with you this evening to introduce herself.
Good evening, everyone, and I wanted to thank the members of the board, Billy Mitchell, and the cabinet for your trust to really believe that and to hire me as a new principal. I feel a little bit that like that little kid on the news, you know, on the block. But I am really excited and looking forward to start working with the students, with the parents, and with the amazing staff at Rorimer Elementary. So thank you once again for trusting me. Thank you.
We do have two other employees that we will be bringing for the future meeting, Sally Nunez. She's the former Principal at Rorimer Elementary. I don't know if I, can I not see her? Is she here?
She's here.
Oh, please, so we need to do the block. So Sally Nunez, as you know, has served this role at Northern Principal and at Rorimer Elementary as our Principal. And it's my pleasure this evening to introduce, really introduce her to you as our Director of Elementary Education.
Good evening, members of the Board, Documental and Cabinet. I would like to thank you for this opportunity to serve as the Director of Educational Services for the Elementary Division. I've been in the district for about eighteen years and I've served in different sites. But just the opportunity to serve our students and staff in the community district wide is amazing. I'm looking forward to learning and working with Dr. Samora as well as our directors who are amazing. So thank you so much for having that trust in my capacity to serve. Thank you.
So as you see tonight, this is a bench of homegrown people. These are folks that have served tried and true in our district in a variety of different positions and capacities. We're very excited to see them continue to soar and lead in their new roles. We also have one other person we will introduce at the next meeting, is Shaw Sanchez, was selected as the new Assistant Principal at Nogales High School. Unfortunately, she had a scheduling conflict that we knew about well in advance, so she wasn't able to run this meeting. But she will be coming to our August four meeting to be here in person. She has already gotten and puts on the ground and she's running fast. So she does send her apologies for not being able to be here this evening, but she will be very close. So top of mind for most people is the opening of school. And we're excited to welcome back our students in person on Monday, August the ninth. So the next item on the agenda is a presentation to share with the board a little bit about what that's going to be like and the preparations that our whole team have done. So let me take a quick pause for a minute as we set up that PowerPoint and have an opportunity for our newly selected leaders to exit the room should they wish to. They have a meeting right early tomorrow. And so I know that she would like to stay, but I'm going to allow them the opportunity to gracefully swivel around.
Congratulations. The next step, meeting will receive twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year plan and in-person learning report next. I will turn to Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you very much. So as shared, we're very excited to have the opportunity to welcome our students back in person on our first day of school, which is August the ninth. So I prepared a brief presentation to share with you a little bit about the work that's gone into preparing for that. And then we also have a parent meeting that is scheduled for July the twenty seventh. At last count, we had over a thousand parents already registered to attend that meeting. We sent postcards out, there's the parent square messages, so the word is definitely out and excited to be able to share with our parents as well on Tuesday. So I am looking at the presentation and the information. We take our guidance from the California Department of Public Health, as you know, and the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health. So California Department of Public Health has issued their new guidance around schools and as a rule relate to our opening. And Los Angeles County Department of Public Health has not yet published theirs, but has said to us that they intend to follow what the California Department of Public Health has already shared. So should there be any changes with, with what LA County does, we will obviously make adjustments. And as a team, we are prepared to, to swivel and move as we need to, as things change. This is obviously a very fluid situation as we work with the pandemic and make sure that we are, are ready to, to meet whatever expectations and needs that we have that are outlined by our public health department. And we have gone significantly above what they've asked as well. So we also have the budget trailer bill, which was Assembly Bill, Senate Bill one thirty. So a Senate Bill, Assembly Bill, Senate Bill one thirty does state that schools are to open this year for in-person as the primary mode of instruction. But it also says that we, we must allow an independent study option for families who feel that their child's health may be compromised by attending in-person. As we know, the vaccines are available now for students that are twelve years and older, but not for our younger students. And so it was, it is clearly outlined that they, it is allowed for us to continue an independent study option for students based on parent choice. So as we look at what does our instructional program look like? We have two models, in-person learning and independent study. In in-person learning, as I've shared, we're excited to welcome folks back. It will be a full day of, of instruction, including recess, nutrition break, lunch, et cetera. So it's a full day of learning. And students at our secondary schools will be changing classes, going from class to class. And we have prepared our, our classrooms and our, our space to maximize health and safety, which we'll cover in a bit. For in-person learning, again, students are going to participate in in-person learning in something that looks more familiar to us when we, when we opened the year in twenty nineteen. The, they'll be in classrooms with their peers, they'll be with their classroom teacher, they'll be having lunch, they'll be having recess, they'll be able to go outside and play, et cetera. For independent study, independent study will not be in-person, it would be done virtually. It will look different than our virtual classroom. Independent study, as outlined in Assembly Bill, Senate Bill one thirty, has very specific expectations. For students in grades TK through three, you must have daily synchronous instruction, which means that the teacher would need to provide daily instruction, daily teaching live in Zoom or another platform, but we use Zoom, to make sure that that child is engaged and receiving their lessons. They, at this point, our offer will not be less than one hour per day. So students will receive a minimum of one hour per day in grades TK through three in live synchronous instruction. The independent study teachers will be different than our in-person classroom teachers. And so our in-person classroom teachers will be serving their roster, their class roster. Our independent study teachers will be serving a roster of students who are on independent study. For students in grades four through eight, there's a requirement for a daily check-in, daily interaction. We've said that that will be in approximately thirty minutes, that the teacher will be checking in with students. And then it's weekly synchronous. So there will be not, not less than one hour per week of synchronous learning for grades four through eight. In grades nine through twelve, the, the bill requires weekly synchronous instruction. So for our high school students, they will receive not less than one hour per week with, with the teacher. And those are at the minimums, once we know exactly what our class rosters look like, what the needs of those students are, then we will fill out a more specific schedule for each individual student. So again, with independent study, there's no in-person interaction, it's done all remotely. The expectations is that learning takes place independent of a class, not significant involvement with peers, unless involved with the teacher. Teachers are there, they provide all of the lessons, they provide all of the guides, it's an online learning format that they would be using. They would also be checking in, turning in assignments, teachers do all of the grading of that assignment, and letter briefs are assigned for the students' work that is submitted. We also are preparing for before and after-school care. We know that many of our families require before and or after-school care. And so we are providing before and after-school care on the campuses that have previously had it. And if there are others that are offering a program, it's something that we would, we would allow. This year, twenty one, twenty two, we are only allowing the after-school care program to serve the students that attend that school. So if there's an after-school program at Killian Elementary School, only students to attend Killian Elementary School can attend that after-school program. If you're a Blainford student, you would attend Blainford, a Hurley student would attend Hurley. There are a few programs in our district where students may have attended another, another school during the day and a different school in the afternoon. And Alex Flores and his team have reached out to all of our after-school providers and have let them know that this is a provision so that we can at least cohort by school and not cross, uh, polonize it, be amongst schools. And that has been, that has been, there's been some challenges with that, but overall, it's been very well received. So if there's a program that's been offered on one school campus but had students from other schools, we've offered them the ability to open a class at the, at the school that the students attend. Um, the, in, in also looking, we realize that having students together in different cohorts and different groupings and so forth for after-school or before-school care requires more detailed planning. And then, and that is a part of our historical schedule for our, our team to be doing. General operations, we have, that all of our general operations are going to follow with the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health guidelines state for us, and we will be reviewing them quite closely when they are published. We have all of our cleaning procedures and daily cleaning protocols. There is an entry screening, which has previously been required by the, the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health, it is in the California guidance. As you know, we have thermal scanners on all of our campuses. And all of our employees do an electronic check-in. And we ask that all of our students, with the support of their parents, also do a check-in. Hand washing, soap and sanitizers are readily available, face coverings are required. So with the California Department of Public Health, their guidance requires face covering indoors at all times, regardless of vaccination status. And so our students and our staff will be wearing face coverings. We have looked at our classroom design, we have desk shields on all of the desks. We've maximized space in every room to the, to its most optimal level. And then we have signs and information that are visible on campus to help with traffic flow and reduce the crowded. For transportation, as we start the school year with transportation, we will be serving students who have transportation as a part of their individual educational plan. So we'll be transporting our special education students as we begin the school year. That will be our primary focus. Our goal is to seat students, one student to a seat on the bus. We know that that isn't always possible. When that's not possible, there'll be two students to a seat, one closest to the window, one closest to the aisle. So there still is space in between, in that middle area. For students that use our district transportation, the drivers are performing temperature checks because that is their first point of entry is the bus. So there is a scanner on our buses. In the event that the scanner is not working properly, our buses are also prepared with handheld thermometers. We are also, during loading of the bus, we will load the back of the bus first and then work our way towards the front so that students aren't passing each other. So again, these are things that Alex Flores and his team have put into place that are not part of the requirements of the health department, but are just good sounding practices that we believe help to keep our students and staff as safe as possible. For campus entry, we have, again, as I shared, everyone is asked to do a self-check. Our employees check in electronically. Our students, with the support of their parents, check in by asking four questions about fever, cough, shortness of breath, or loss of taste or smell. And then students' temperatures are also checked daily as, as staff, as they enter the campus using the only FDA-approved thermal scanner. And you see a picture of that scanner there. In the event that there is a student who has, or staff member that has an elevated temperature, is feeling, has any symptoms, et cetera, they, there, we have an isolation area on each campus, should that happen in the morning or anytime throughout the day, that our health clerk and our nursing staff is there to support. For health and safety, there's our, you know, some items that we've put into place. We have desk shields, increased outside airflow, meaning that doors and windows are open. The exterior doors and windows are open to the greatest extent possible. There are hand sanitizer stations in all of our classrooms and common areas. We've replaced all of our drinking fountains with touchless bottle filling stations. And in some areas, also with additional sinks for additional hand washing. We have directional signs. We have upgraded all of the filters across the district in our HVAC units, we're thirteen filters. We also replaced a HEPA built air filter in each classroom and in most common areas. And we have improved increased cleaning protocols. There are just some pictures so you can see what it's like on our campuses. You'll see the desk shields that are there, we have hand sanitizer station, doors are open, and you see some of the signage on the door as well. Some of the signage here, again, another model of a desk shield that is there. And then we also have antibacterial wipes, that's what that large bucket is. That's the industrial size of the antibacterial wipes, as well as signage. I knew you'd be excited to see a Mercur thirteen filter, what that looks like. So I couldn't resist but to include that because I knew that that was exactly what you were asking, curious about. And then you see on the far right, that HEPA air filter. That's there, it happens to be up on a, on a table so that it's able to be displayed with a pretty picture. But it is not normally sitting on a table, it's normally down on the floor. You see on the left, that's a, an additional sink that has replaced a, what was a one-time drinking fountain, now has a sink for additional hand washing. And it has a touchless bottle filling station, and then the soap and paper towels and so forth. And then you see a variety of different floor decals for spacing on our campuses. For lunch and nutrition services, we will be serving breakfast and lunch provided for all of our students throughout the twenty one, twenty two school year. One of the new provisions that is in place for the twenty one, twenty two school is that all students, it is also known that to our board probably as universal meals. All of our students have the opportunity for breakfast and lunch at no cost to them throughout the twenty one, twenty two school year. So Maria Dabila, our Director of Nutrition Services, working with Mr. Flores, has put into place and talking with us again with all of our, our principals about staggered serving schedules, floor markers, hand sanitizer at the start of the serving line. Our younger students will no longer be using the keypad. Our high school students will be, because there's a key code for their number, which we still do need track of. So we have alternative ways of collecting that information. And then students will be directed to eat outdoors. We are looking at all of our facilities, both indoors and outdoors. But again, we know that students will have masks off at that time. And we are going to try to maximize the opportunity to eat outdoors as much as possible. For our youngest students, our, our transitional kindergarten, kindergarten, first grade students, that's a long walk for them with a tray of food. So it is highly likely they will continue to eat indoors. And but we will be able to distance, because there will be fewer students. Our older students will be eating outdoors. We have secured four tents on each campus to be able to house outdoor learning spaces as well as outdoor eating spaces. So each campus will have a large white tent, four of them on each campus. And students will be able to, again, have outdoor class there. Some of our music classes may be out there, as well as lunch can be served out there as well. Menus are available online on our district webpage. For recess and nutrition breaks, students are going to be able to go outdoors, enjoy playing with their friends and being together outdoors. That during this time, students will be able to remove their masks. Students will be outdoors, will be able to remove their masks during recess, nutrition, and lunch. For students leaving the classroom for recess, we're asking them that they use hand sanitizer as they exit the room. They will be able to use playground equipment, the playground play structures, as well as balls and so forth. And then we will be encouraging hand washing as they return to class, as well as use of hand sanitizer when they enter the classroom. Then our playground equipment will be wiped down after each recess and lunch. Masks and personal protection equipment, so students and staff are required to wear a mask upon entering and exiting our campus. We are asking for that, if there will be four people together, we know that that is ninety percent of our campuses, that is outdoors. But they'll be entering and exiting with a mask, always indoors while on campus and during passing period. Because we have many students at our secondary schools moving about. And so, but again, during lunch, during recess, and during nutrition break, mask breaks are there. They do not need to be worn outdoors during those times. There, there are exceptions that, that can be made for students who are unable to wear a mask. If there is a medical condition or a situation for a student or a staff member that is unable to wear a mask, our Human Resources Department will be engaging in a, a process with them to determine what other accommodations we might be able to make for their safety and the safety of others. School sites also have masks available for students, most of our students, this is some, this is a, an accessory that we're used to wearing now. Our students have masks. Very appreciative of our community, our community has been offering, a lot of people have been offering donations of masks. But we also have been securing masks and storing masks because we know that we need to make sure that we have adequate masks for students and staff at any time should they need them. So we have masks are available for students and staff as needed on all of our sites and work locations. For office safety protocols, our school offices opened yesterday to serve the public in person. We are looking at capacity within offices, some of our school offices are really small. And so to avoid overcrowding, some folks may need to wait outside in order to be served if there's other people that are there. But we are here serving our community in person, beginning yesterday. And for the safety of our staff and our students, and important as with the California Department of Public Health, visitors will be limited on campus, including parents and volunteers. So we are looking at, the only exceptions to that are direct service providers, people that are on campus for the purpose of serving a, a purpose for, for school operations. For health guidance, I know that, that many people hear about the, the CDC. The CDC is an advisory, advisory body. And then the California Department of Public Health and the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health are regulatory bodies. We also have CalOSHA. So these are four agencies that we watch daily, and if not multiple times a day, for any changes and updates that they provide. And as a team, as an executive cabinet team, we also have regular meetings with representatives from these different groups so that we can have the most updated information. And we are prepared to be able to pivot as And we are prepared to be able to live it out as needed if the requirements change. In short, with COVID-19 testing, we do have the ability and are prepared to offer free COVID-19 testing to students and employees who are returning to school or work. It's on a voluntary basis if students or employees would like to be tested before the return and the opening of school that is available. Students, employees who possibly have been exposed to COVID-19 are able, we are able to support them in testing here locally within our district and then also on a regular basis for screening purposes. So we do have the ability to test it, supporting our students and our staff. COVID-19 response, in the event that we need to respond to a situation, we do have a district response team. We also have site COVID safety teams that are in place. There are notification requirements, which we have already in place and in play. There are quarantine requirements. The California Department of Public Health has changed with their newest guidance. There are different quarantine requirements based on vaccination status. There's also access to testing, as I've already mentioned. And then the district response team provides notifications to the Department of Public Health and to OSHA of all confirmed cases. And we do have a dashboard on our website that notes those cases. So that helps in the rumor mill at times because it may seem that something is very large and in fact it is not. And so, but it allows just immediate transparent information for our families and our staff to be able to see. There we go. In terms of communication, so we have been communicating with our families. Again, I shared with you that we have a parent meeting that is coming up. But we have our Roland Unified School District website that is updated regularly. We continue to have parent hotlines. We sent out an all-district mailer with a postcard welcoming our students back. Our Student Services Department has been fielding those calls and parents still have questions prior to our school offices being open or wanting to know about alternative learning options if they're not quite sure if they should have their child in in-person learning. And so we are also, each of our principals are calling all of those families that have called our Student Services Department for that personal touch as well, making sure that they're reaching out to answer the questions now that they're back, back at work as well. We are having a virtual meeting on July 27th to make sure that parents have the information that they need. And this is an example of the flyer and the advertisement of the meeting that is July 27th at 6:00 p.m. And then you'll see there that you need additional information to contact our Student Services Department. And then we also created a video that went out today, with public today, and so I will share.
Hello, Roland Unified Families. I'm Dr. Julie Mitchell, your Superintendent of Schools. We are excited to welcome our students back to our school campuses for in-person instruction, beginning on the first day of school, August 9th. We look forward to students experiencing a warm, welcoming, and engaging learning environment that challenges students academically while continuing our focus on health, safety, care, and connection. The safety and well-being of our students and staff remains our top priority. As we open school, we will continue to follow the guidelines from the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health. Additionally, knowing that our current situation may experience changes, we will be able to respond to any new updates or changes as they occur. Our district has implemented many health and safety measures, which include the installation of the only FDA-approved infrared thermal screening camera system at each school site. This allows the temperatures of staff and students to be screened as they enter daily. Hand sanitizer stations are in all classrooms, offices, and common areas, and frequent hand washing will be encouraged. There are clearly marked social distancing pathways and signage displayed throughout our campuses. Drinking fountains have been replaced with touchless bottle filling stations and, in some areas, additional sinks for hand washing. Improved ventilation systems, including new HVAC, improved filtration, and a HEPA filter in every classroom. Furniture is arranged to maximize distancing, and desk shields are on each desk for added protection. All staff participate in daily electronic health screening prior to reporting to work, and students are to conduct a health screening as well before coming to school. All staff and students with the support of parents are to check to confirm that they are COVID-19 symptom-free and have not been exposed before reporting to school. These symptoms include, but are not limited to, fever, difficulty breathing, cough, or loss of taste or smell. Most important, for the health and safety of all, individuals with COVID-19 symptoms are required to stay at home. While at school, based on current guidance from the Public Health Department, masks will continue to be worn by all students and staff. As we prepare for our students to return, our classrooms have changed a bit to allow for increased health and safety measures. Let's take a look at what our classrooms may look like when we return on August 9th.
Good morning. Welcome to class. Good morning. Welcome to class. I know everyone went through their initial screening to make sure everyone is feeling well. Thank you for putting your backpacks on your seats. It looks like you guys are ready to go. As you can see, for safety purposes, the students and I are wearing face coverings.
As we welcome our students back, we are planning to provide our students with a full instructional day with engaging lessons focused on the needs of our students. Students will have access to instructional materials, including textbooks, library books, and their individual device checked out to each student. Specifics about materials will be provided by your child's teacher.
Handwashing and hygiene will be practiced and reinforced regularly throughout the day. When handwashing is not available, hand sanitizer will be in all classrooms for easy student access. Our staff will be cleaning and wiping down high-frequent areas throughout the day as well.
When possible, doors and windows will be open to allow for increased ventilation. Students will participate in a full day of learning, including lunch and recess. Our full staff is committed to providing all students with a welcoming and safe learning environment.
Additional information will be shared at a virtual parent meeting on Tuesday, July 27th at 6:00 p.m. Look for more information in your mail, on our district webpage, and through ParentSquare. We know that many of our students have not attended school in person since March of 2020, and this fall will be an adjustment. We are committed to doing everything we can for each and every student as we welcome them back, and we will continue to provide the support needed to ensure a positive homecoming. If you have further questions, please contact your school office or visit our district website for more information. While we plan for all students to return in person on August 9th, we know some families may have specific questions or concerns. For families who prefer not to return to in-person instruction, please contact our Student Services Department to discuss alternative learning options at 626-474-2513. Thank you for your continued support. We are better together and are excited about seeing our students in person when school starts on August 9th.
I have a question?
Yes.
Yes, my question is on the independent study. Do you know how many students are signed up for that as of today?
As, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have the number as of today off the top of my head, but I can tell you as of Tuesday, there were 130 students who had expressed, whose parents have called to express this interest in learning more about alternative learning options. So that number has grown, has increased because our postcards have gone out, the video, you know, there's more information that's going out. But we have been speaking to them throughout the summer. At the conclusion of the year, we offered this opportunity to call our Student Services Office. And so for those parents who've reached out to our Student Services Office, our principals, they've gotten information from Student Services. We've answered their question, but our principals are calling them to see as well to see if they have any additional questions and see if they made any decisions. I'm asking that parents let us know if they would like independent study after the parent meeting. So allow them the opportunity to attend the parent meeting on the 27th and then let us know.
Along the ways, can they change their mind to, let's say, after the third month or the fourth month? Or have they been staying independent?
No, they may change their mind at any time, and we will return them to in-person learning within five days. So as a parent starts an independent study and feels that their child would be better served or their situation has changed and they'd like to return to in-person instruction, we will place them in an in-person classroom. They may not be able to attend their homeschool. Their school may be at capacity and they're certain grade level with that child in, but we will place them in in-person learning within five days.
Would you know the number one reason why they would do this? I mean, why would the parents decide on this?
The number one reason that has been given is a lack of vaccines that are available to our younger students. There are high school and secondary students who are eligible by age for vaccine, but that is the most common reason that parents are giving is that they don't yet have an ability to vaccinate their children. And then there are just, there are just general concerns that still exist.
Thank you.
In regards to hand sanitizer stations, to make sure our facility department is looking at the area, maybe more height and level, make sure that they're actually, it's available for the child.
Yes, yes. So that's part of, the custodians are wiping down door handles and so forth, and they're also checking the hand sanitizer stations. One of the challenges that we have is when they haven't been in use, they can clog. So now we're making sure that, because some of them haven't been in use since we had in-person support in the spring, we're making sure that they are.
And then the teachers who need refills have the, they're easily accessible?
Yes.
I just have a question about the nurses to make sure every school in our district has a nurse available and they're helping.
So we do not have a nurse at every school, but we have district nurses that float and are available. Debbie Gotti is our lead nurse, and she serves on our COVID response team. And so she's available for support, and then we do have a health clerk at each department.
Thank you.
David?
Excellent presentation, video. There's so much stuff there that to absorb it all in one viewing is very difficult. Will this be available on district website or anyplace else that somebody can look at it and maybe see it twice or, and watch it with their, you know, their students?
Yes, it is already on our district webpage. It was put on the website today and it was sent out to our families today.
Correct.
The video, not the presentation, the video.
Right, yeah.
Yes.
Excellent.
That was live today.
Whoever did it did a great job.
Any quick? Okay. Yes, again, the, it's very good present, sorry, very present, presentation, especially the video. But I understand is, the county and, and the state, something called the kitchen, you should change in the photo box, and you know the lesson, so the, they, you made the video a very short time, and it's very, it's not easy. Yeah, yeah, because the lesson, you get all the information in the video, I realize that. So, and my question is, in high school, when they're changing classrooms, yeah, we're expecting that we're still knocking between buildings, and you have a direction sign. So how will you enforce it? Because the kids, when you get out of the room and the, you mark the, the, the directions.
So all of our classrooms, we have the opportunity for in-person support in the spring to put into practice the things that we had established. And then we have summer learning to be able to do that as well, in-person summer learning. So each doors, all of our doors are marked, whether it's an entrance or an exit door, and then we do have directional pathways, and, and follow them. And they, they take the path. Our student is going to potentially walk in the wrong direction, sure. And so our staff will say, oh, we go this way, and we'll turn around and go in the direction.
Another question is the, for outdoor lunch, if some students would be having lunch outdoor.
Yes.
Did you say you would prepare the large tent for them outside? Are they enough for everyone in case of bad weather, rainy raining? So we, big enough accommodate everyone?
So rain will be a challenge. When it rains, it will be a challenge because they are, they don't have sides on them because that would then create an indoor structure. It's just a top on it. And so there are four tents per campus, and we are working, Mr. Flores and his team are working with the principals to determine if they need additional tents as well. Some of our schools have different spaces or areas or need different sizes. So at this point, everyone's starting with four, and we can't get additional ones if we need to.
Okay. And for the, before the after-school programs start running in our campus, the, make sure the operators have this, get the same information as we get to follow the protocol, follow the guidelines because, you know, the, they may not have ability to receive the information. So we make sure we pass the complete vision to them, then follow it.
Yeah, we have begun meeting with them already to share the information, and then, and then it's the following. But they also are, they are reporting requirements and things that they have to do with Los Angeles County Department of Public Health. They're, they're important as well.
So for those who have the after-school program and they move in until like six o'clock, six thirty, and, and how our custodian can clean the classrooms? So make sure we clean after they leave.
So our custodians work a night shift?
Yeah.
Regularly, so they...
Yeah. And the supply or sanitizer, the, all these supplies for, for the COVID-19 safety, make sure they have enough supply or we generally supply them, make sure all the kids have safe for after-school programs use. Yeah. Is it, did you mention?
I also did want to share that the video is in Spanish and Chinese. It's also on the website with subtitles. So we have it subtitled and all of the information, so in English, Spanish, and Chinese. And then I also just received information, so this is hot off the press, that there is a vaccine clinic that is going to be held on Tuesday at Porta. So we are having a vaccine clinic as well within the district, and we have posted them here in the district office as well. So always trying to get that most up-to-date information. So that actually just came in while we were here, so I wanted to share that information as well. Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, next item. If you can, there's other comments, does it mention any comments?
Yes, there are comments.
Yes, our first speaker is Lena Sedia-Wan. Yes, to read. Oh, it says, just, um, hold on just a moment.
Sure, just one second, this word. Mr. Chen is going to read a statement.
Okay, the company is welcome to provide comments to the board. Remarks are limited to three minutes unless extended or limited by votes of the board. A maximum of 20 minutes unless extended by the board is allowed for each subject.
Just check this. Sorry, could you repeat that again?
Presentation under which the board must operate. Do not allow the board members to comment on that agenda either or if you may bring up, they are not on agenda. Additionally, no action can be taken. However, the board may give direction to the staff following the comments.
Do I have to have my video on?
Uh, do I have to have my video on? Oh, okay. Okay, so. Good evening. Thank you to the Board of Education of Rowan Unified School District, Cabinet Superintendent Dr. Julie Mitchell, Teachers and Parents. Uh, my name is Vincent Lee and I'm speaking on behalf of Lena City One. So my three kids have been in the music program and part of RUSD orchestras. Music has made an impact for the community and contributes to the mind and soul of our students. We are very grateful for the support of music programs in the district, which really benefit the child development in the way that can't be achieved through any other academic subjects at school. However, due to COVID nineteen, a lot of students have missed the opportunity to receive the music instructions from their music teachers. Nothing can substitute in-person learning for music instruction. Music instruction using the Zoom platform is very challenging with the digital divide, instability of the internet and lack of reinforcements and motivation. Students are mo- unmotivated, frustrated and regretted a lot in their musical skills during this period. We are really grateful for Mr. Chen, Mr. Hobbs and other music teachers who diligently teach over Zoom. Most of the time looking at black screens because students wouldn't turn on their videos or cameras. Even in the midst of online instructions, Mr. Chen and other teachers persistently and successfully produced the first ever virtual concerts. These virtual concerts really warmed the hearts of parents and community worldwide and appreciated the students and teachers who worked really hard for the concert. We would like to request the Board of Education to continue supporting our music program with the E S S E R Fund, Elementary and Secondary Schools Emergency Relief Fund. It is crucial that we have additional music teachers for middle school and high school. There is not enough music teachers in the district and instruction is very minimal. At the elementary level, pre-COVID, in-person classes were only fifty minutes once a week. With a forty to one student teacher ratio, which is very minimal. In addition, a lot of kids in the district cannot afford to buy musical instruments and we need to have more financial support for instruments and more coaches. Should be hired to provide free lessons for students to make up for lost learning to COVID. We are really proud of Rowan High School Performing Arts Center and hope to continue to see more performances in the future. However, there is no dedicated space only for orchestra students. Orchestra students need to share with the band students in the band room. Students cannot store their own instruments after practice. I've been to nearby school districts with its own orchestra room and its secondary schools and it's really make them feel belonging to the group that they, if they have their own space. The loss of ensemble music education across the district needs to be regained with more financial support from the Board of Education of RUSD. The appreciation of music will improve the students' well-being and create a sense of deep belonging that ensemble music learning provides. Thank you.
Our next person is Mary Ha. Ms. Ha, you can go ahead and speak.
Good evening, board members. My name is Mary Ha and I'm an incoming senior at Rowan High School. I'm here to address why I think the board should approve RUSD orchestra's request to attend and participate in the Carnegie Hall National Festival. I've been in the RUSD strings program since fourth grade and I've pursued my studies in music through the violin thus far. I have taken on the responsibility as president of Rowan High School's orchestra this coming year. And I intend for this year to be one of the best and memorable experiences for each individual member of the orchestra. Throughout my years of being in the strings program, I've seen much improvement. It first started as a couple of stray students learning music in a music bus out back in the parking lot. So a much larger number in a designated classroom with the proper equipment needed. I believe our participation in the Carnegie Hall National Festival is an excellent opportunity to further improve and refine our program. Although Carnegie Hall may seem daunting and a great responsibility, I feel that Rowan Orchestra is more than ready to take on such a feat. During my past three high school years in orchestra, we have faced significant challenges which we overcame collectively. And which have thoroughly prepared us to participate and perform at Carnegie Hall. For instance, we have competed in SCS BOA Ratings Festival and received a rating of superior unanimously from a panel of three judges. In addition, this past year, we were the first to do a virtual performance. Of course, this year. Learning and teaching virtually was extremely difficult on both ends as hands-on, undivided learning is crucial in playing an instrument. However, through our unified and dedicated efforts, we were able to persevere regardless of our situation and reach out to individuals through music. In December of twenty seventeen, the Rowan Unified Orchestra Parent Booster was first established and formally board approved. Our booster is still actively helping today. Some of the things they do and provide include organizing events, fundraising for the group, promoting the music program. Volunteering at the events and overall support for the organization. In the twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen school year, the idea for a three-day overnight orchestra camp at Camp Cedar Lake was board approved. The goal of the camp was to bring students together to, from all around the district so that they can collaborate through music. Bond with one another and create an unforgettable experience. It wouldn't be an exaggeration to say that this trip to Carnegie Hall is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for many of the students in orchestra. It truly is. To be able to stand and perform in the same venue as so many famous artists have would be unimaginable, yet in our case, it is not impossible. It would be a tragedy to pass up on such a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. It would not only uplift our experience of being in a high school orchestra, but also up the standard and reputation of our music program as well as the district. I really hope you would carefully consider approving this trip and hopefully this coming year, an unforgettable experience. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Ha. Our next speaker is Kimberly Senebria.
Hello and goodne- good evening to all. My name is Kimberly Senebria and I'm an incoming senior at Nogales High School and the president of the Nogales Orchestra. I began playing instruments from a very young age, beginning with the violin and moving on to the cello about four years later. I have been in the orchestra program with Mr. Chen since the seventh grade and I can certainly say that the orchestra. Program has helped me in many ways, not just academically, but socially as well. Alongside the program, I have grown along with many other students. And have certainly helped with the growth of the program throughout the year. This opportunity that we were given to particip- participate in the National Invitational Band and Orchestra Festival at Carnegie Hall in New York simply just represents the hard work that not only Mr. Chen. But all the other instructors have put into the program, but also the students, parents, and of course, our supporters on the district board. I believe that this festival is an amazing opportunity for the program to thrive and prosper as a whole. And I speak for all students when I say that it would be an honor to represent the Rowan Unified School District in this festival. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Kimberly. Our next speaker is Mr. Roman Robles Rodriguez.
Hello and good evening, Rowan Unified Bo- Board members and parents. My name is Roman Robles Rodriguez, an alumni from Nogales High School. I am here to address why I believe that the board should approve RUSD's orchestra's request to attend and participate in the Carnegie Hall National Festival. I've been with the RUSD orchestra program for five years from middle school to high school and I've studied viola. And many other instruments underneath Mr. Chen since the beginning of my time with the orchestra. I have been a section leader within Nogales Orchestra and have cho- and have a very close bond within all the students and alumni in both. Nogales and Rowan orchestras from which was strengthened by the time we spent together practicing for concerts and also for field trips. Many of the memories we shared together shows that our bond for music is much stronger than peers, but as a family. And I personally believe that the Carnegie Hall National Festival will be one of, one great adventure that will help strengthen the bond of. Both orchestras together and their love towards music. Carnegie Hall is very much a daunting place for many musicians, but I know and believe that the students in both high school orchestras are ready to step up for this challenge ahead of us. The sense of responsibility is not something new to the musicians as they have all persevered from many concerts online and in person. And all have persevered great and well. Many of the musicians do need this trip to get a motivational boost because music is meant to be shared in person with one another. And my time within the online learning with orchestra was missing the aspect many students love from day one, which is making music with others. Music is definitely a bond that us as humans hold with one another and help many students. Quite honestly, gain motivation to continue on with their learning. I personally, within my four years, have had orchestra as one of my biggest motivations for my four years of high school. And I want this program to continue on its beauty and keeping students motivated every day. This trip for orchestra will not only bring the motivation back for students from online learning, but will continue to inspire more students every day. That is why I believe that Nogales should get the chance to go on this trip all the way to Carnegie Hall. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Robles Rodriguez. Our last speaker for the evening is Ms. Amy Urban.
Good evening, President Chen, um, school board, Dr. Mitchell and cabinet. Tonight I'm in front of you in my second year as A R U president and never did I think we would have a school here like we just did. And then be in discussions on how we plan to bring back our students to school. Month the safety protocols. On the agenda tonight are two items that A R U want to show their appreciation towards. On June twenty-third, A R U and the district negotiation teams reached a tentative agreement that will run from July twenty twenty-one to June of twenty twenty-four. A R U members voted on the contract and overwhelmingly ratified the TA. We look forward to the school, the the school board voting and proving this contract. A R U wants to thank both negotiations teams as they were able to get an agreement before the contract expired and also gives us, gives both of us. The time to really focus on our students as they come back next month. Also on the agenda tonight is approval of the job description for elementary counselors. In May, I came to this board and asked that this job should not be outsourced to an outside agency. Seeing the job description, the district hiring counselors for our students is a good start for our youngest learners after a difficult school year. A R U is looking forward to the vote tonight to approve the job descriptions and define the most qualified candidates who will serve our community. We are looking forward to the first day of school on August ninth. We will be ready and are working with the district to make sure that all the safety and health protocols are in place. Our members have the opportu- have had the opportunity to participate in professional learning development and create their own lessons on social emotional learning. We know this has to be a priority for both our students and our staff. The past school year, the board has discussed all consistently that. The SCL health of our students and staff is important. Again, seeing this work happen is much appreciated, though needs to be ongoing. Thank you again, and A R U looks forward to bringing back our students um in August and enjoying this school year. Thank you.
Okay, just um. Move to the next item, one question. In regards to the first presentation I spoke. Music for All was a big push for this board. And I think we're at a point where we really do need a, an update report of where we're at. And if we could have that, um, either at a board meeting or a study session or something, you know, where we're at for Music for All in all grade levels.
Let's move to next items, uh, public hearing. And we afford public hearing to receive input on a sunshine proposal from the Rowan Unified School District. To Carnegie School Association. For the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Any member of the public who would like to provide comment on the sunshine proposal is invited to do so by raising their virtual hand. The public hearing is open at seven oh seven.
I see no raised hands, just FYI.
Public hearing is closed at seven oh eight. So then move to next item, it's discussion item. And discussion and action item. And a motion and a second to approve. A B twelve hundred and A B twenty-seven fifty-six. For Rowan Unified School District's tentative agreement with the Association of Rowan Educators. Need a motion. I'll move. I'll move. I'll second. David Melken, second. Any question, discussion? Uh, roll call vote. Donna Freeman.
Aye.
Angus Gonzalez.
Aye.
David Melken.
Aye.
Eric Menegas.
Aye.
Eric Chen.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item, seven B, that motion and a second to approve. The tentative agreement between the Rowan Unified School District and the Association of Rowan Educators. I'll move.
I'll second.
David Melken, move and Donna Freeman, second. Any question? Comments?
I'd like to thank all the parties that were involved negotiating this. Took a lot of time, a lot of quark and peppers.
Any more questions? Questions? Comment? No. Okay, so roll call, move. Donna Freeman.
Aye.
Angus Gonzalez.
Aye.
David Melken.
Aye.
Eric Menegas.
Aye.
Eric Chen.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, seven C, in the motion and a second to approve the Rowan Unified School District's initial proposal. For bargaining with the Carnegie School Employees Association and it is only chapter one thirty-three.
I'll move.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Angus, second. I guess. Roll call vote. Donna Freeman.
Aye.
Angus Gonzalez.
Aye.
David Melken.
Aye.
Eric Menegas.
Aye.
Eric Chen.
Aye.
Motion carries. So next item, seven D, that motion and a second to approve. The contract agreement between the Rowan Unified School District and the Carnegie Los Angeles.
I'll move.
Donna Freeman. Hold on. Eric, second. Questions?
Um, obvious, please. This has been something that's been discussed many a times and community and on news lately. And I have to say that the um. The agreement that we have and the working relationship that we have with the Sheriff's Department is exceptional. And I think we all benefit from it, the students, staff, faculty, everybody. And um, I really support this. I think that it makes our school safer. I think it's better for everybody.
I'll take it back.
Yeah, I was having a child in the school a couple of years ago. It was a very positive experience. Any other comments? Roll call vote. Donna Freeman.
Aye.
Angus Gonzalez.
Aye.
David Melken.
Aye.
Eric Menegas.
Aye.
Eric Chen.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item, seven B, in the motion and a second to approve. The Rowan Unified School District's orchestral performance trip to Carnegie Hall in New York City.
I'll move. I'll second.
Absolutely, you second. Yeah, and this uh, the motion, uh, any comments, questions?
It was nice to hear the people talk today that came and, you know, publicly to know that it's very important to them. I think it's wonderful. I think it's a good opportunity for our students to experience this.
Yeah, I was very happy to see the students participating in this. Um, I understand that this goes along with um, some students um, doing some fundraising also. So they're actively beginning, being involved in this process. It's not just a, a, a trip that they're going to be taking. It's a learning trip. They get to mentor with some of the best people of music and. And um I've always said that education goes beyond the walls of a school. And this is just a one example of.
I know, it's not just a free trip. There is fundraising, they're, they're working on it, it gets incentive for it, so it's amazing, once in a while.
And Carnegie Hall is a dream of decision.
And for those students that are less are less likely to be able to forge a like this, there's built-in means to allow all students equal access to this.
Oh, and your wishes? Okay. Donna Freeman.
Very proud, I.
Angus Gonzalez.
I.
David Malcolm.
Very happy to say I.
And Harry.
Menegas.
Absolutely, I.
Eric Chen. Motion carries. Because that's the first reading of uh motion, the second for the right board of O C sixty one to eighth independent study. Comments? Um, I'll second. Eric, second. Questions?
I have a couple of questions, please. Um. Page three. There's no really lettering, but page three towards very bottom. It talks about responsibility to independent study administrator.
Yes.
Who is the independent study administrator?
It's listed in our administrative regulation as superintendent or designated. Historically, it has been Mr. Perez, Greg Perez, the principal at Centana High School. Uh, he has been our independent study administrator. Uh, we just had a discussion this week depending on the size of that program.
Okay, and the secondly, um it talks about the assignment responsibility of independent study teachers. I assume any teacher could eventually become an independent uh, study teacher. If they have a student that wants to go on independent study.
No, there will be, uh, teach, there there will be teachers that are selected to support our students on independent study.
Okay.
So there will be independent study teachers and in-person teachers. There may be some small crossover between an in-person teacher who may support a student who is on independent study, but taking a very selective course, and I, I gave an example earlier around automotive.
Right.
Um, that there may be a need for the in-person teacher to after hours for additional compensation to support that student who has needed. Um, but there will be in-person teachers will be different than independent study teachers.
Okay, and then there's a whole list of twelve items that goes along with that responsibility. Is that something that we're gonna have, I assume, training or something for those teachers that are independent study teachers?
The, the responsibilities of an independent study teacher are not different than the responsibility of a classroom teacher in terms of providing lessons and so forth. There are some different, this is that are here, instruction will be given differently.
Uh huh.
So it will be in some small groups, some one-on-ones, some large group. Um, and so, yes, when teachers are hired and selected as independent study teachers, they will be working with our ed services team. Um, who are so we selected through our selection process, our ed services team, and then the administrator and their designated needs will be working with that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Donna.
And I wasn't sure how it would work, but this, your presentation explained everything, so I really appreciate that. It sounds very good, thank you.
Any other questions?
Roll call, Donna Freeman.
I.
Angus Gonzalez.
Hi.
David Malcolm.
Hi.
Eric Menegas.
All right.
Eric Chen.
I.
Motion carries. The next item, seven G. And I have a motion and a second to approve the new elementary council description.
I'll move.
Um.
My second.
And a second, any questions?
Uh, David. First of all, do we have, how many people will be in this classification?
We're looking, uh, right now at hiring four additional elementary counselors. We also have one counselor who is assigned to the F R C who can join this.
And I'm on, um, I had turned in. Actually, it's on the someone actually where I didn't go into this draft here. Um, there's one that was left off though. Um. It's one of the bullets under representative duties and responsibilities. This is a grammatical one. It talks about suicidal threats, suicidal ideations. And then they down suicide ideations. It really needs to be suicidal ideations. This is an adjective, idea.
If you make that connection. This is really necessary, especially at this time, um, happening, we're going to. So that our.
Yeah, I remember when, um, when we ran for election, on the day, that was something that you were talking about at that time.
On my campaign, yeah. Oh, yay. They were getting that.
Makes time when it occurs.
Any more questions? Okay, so roll call, Donna Freeman.
I.
Angus Gonzalez.
Hi.
David Malcolm.
Hi.
Eric Menegas.
All right.
Eric Chen.
I.
Motion carries. The next H. In the motion and in the second to approve new deputies superintendent, deputy, so that it's the job description.
I move.
Angus move.
I'll second.
Second and discussion.
Just whatever. You know, I just often wonder how some of these things get in here. And, um, first performing services in this position classification will frequently exert twenty-five to fifty pounds of force. I'm just curious how they get.
Because we've been moving a lot of boxes and pans.
A lot of mask and hats and.
I just wanna say well deserved, Mr. Flores.
Okay. Okay, um, any more questions? Okay, roll call, Donna Freeman.
Hi.
Angus Gonzalez.
I'm happy for you.
I.
David Malcolm.
Proud to say hi.
Eric Menegas.
All right.
Eric Chen. Motion carries. The next item, say, seven I, in the motion and in a second to approve a one-year extension to the contract employment of superintendent schools, Dr. Julie Mitchell, with the exception of one-year extension of existing contract employment to June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. There are no other changes, including no change on salary or fringe benefits. How about?
I second.
And, and a second?
Okay.
Discussion. Roll call vote. Donna Freeman.
I.
Angus Gonzalez.
I.
David Malcolm.
I.
Eric Menegas.
All right.
Eric Chen.
I.
Motion carries. The next item, J. In the motion and in the second to approve a one-year extension to the contract of employment of assistant superintendent Dennis Spencer, with the exception of a one-year extension of the existing contract of employment to June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. There are no other changes, including no change to salary or fringe benefit.
I'll move.
I'll move.
I second.
And a second. Discussion. Roll call vote, Donna Freeman.
I.
Angus Gonzalez.
I.
David Malcolm.
I.
Eric Menegas.
All right.
Eric Chen.
I.
Motion carries. The item K. And a motion and a second to approve a one-year extension to the contract of employment assistance superintendent and the mora, with the exception of the one-year extension of existing contract of employment to June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. There are no other changes, including no change to salary or fringe benefit.
I move.
Angus.
I'll second.
Donna, second. Discussion. Roll call vote, Donna Freeman.
I.
Angus Gonzalez.
I.
David Malcolm.
I.
Eric Menegas.
All right.
Eric Chen.
I.
Motion carries. Next item, seven L. Pursuant to government code section fifty-four nine fifty-three subdivision C three, the board provides this oral summary of the salary and or fringe benefit included in the contract of employment of the deputy superintendent at creative services, Mr. Alejandro Flores. Term of the contract, July twenty-third, twenty twenty-one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Annual salary effective July twenty-three, twenty twenty-one, two hundred twenty-nine thousand, two hundred eighty-two dollars. Other elements of compensation include eligibility or longevity equal to that of all district management as on the management salary schedule. Vantage allowance of two hundred fifty dollars per month. Reimbursement of actual and necessary expenses, including cell phone incurred by him with the scope of employment. And a motion and a second to approve the contract of employment by deputy superintendent step deputy superintendent and creative services, Mr. Alejandro Flores, for the term of July twenty-third, twenty twenty-one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll move.
Donna move. I'll second. The Malcolm second. Discussion.
Congratulations.
Roll call, Donna Freeman.
Well deserved, once again, I.
Angus Gonzalez.
Congratulations.
I.
David Malcolm.
I.
Eric Menegas.
All right.
Eric Chen.
I.
Motion carries. Next item, seven M. In motion and a second to adopt resolution S O twenty dash twenty-two, seven column oh one, emergency resolution dedicating authority to take action to ensure necessary decisions are made regarding the twenty twenty-one, the twenty twenty-two school year due to the coronavirus COVID nineteen pandemic.
I'll move.
I need a second. Uh, Doc, Doc. Um, Menegas, second, uh, discussion.
Yeah, this, and I appreciate this is no temporary thing and we keep extending it and I think it's the right thing to do. It allows us to be flexible and quickly, your guidance to us, excuse me, your discussions with us and as you provide guidance is very, very helpful. I'm glad we can continue to do this, as I see it's necessary for the actual.
I totally agree.
Any more comments?
I'm.
Angus.
I'm, I'm very proud of this district, the presentation that we have regarding all these. Uh, we're ready, we're moving forward.
Uh, Freeman.
I.
Angus Gonzalez.
I.
David Malcolm.
I.
Eric Menegas.
All right.
Eric Chen.
I.
The next item, then item N, seven N, in the motion and in the second to adopt a resolution, A S twenty-one, twenty-two, seven column oh four, emergency procurement authorization to for school safety projects.
I'll move.
Donna move. I'll second. If we begin at the second and discussion. Roll call, Donna Freeman.
I.
Angus Gonzalez.
I.
David Malcolm.
I.
Eric Menegas.
All right.
Eric Chen.
Motion carries.
Seven O. In the motion and a second to establish an associated study by activities special revenue fund.
I'll move.
Donna moves.
I second.
And a second, discussion. Roll call vote, Donna Freeman.
I.
Angus Gonzalez.
I.
David Malcolm.
I.
Eric Menegas.
All right.
Eric Chen.
I.
Motion carries. The next item, seven P. Next item is discussion only. No action will be taken at this time, what is being asked to bring forth for the first reading and a review attached to all policy. Any comment, discussion?
We're on seven P, you know, I have a comment. Um, you know, this goes along with the previous one that we approved, the S R O, the funding for the S R O. And on this one, uh, we talked about policies to go along with that, and there's six items, um, that the board shall approve, and one of them is performance monitor. And I would feel more comfortable if that would be expanded. Um, I feel that, um, with the S R O on campus, uh, due to difference of opinion that people have about the S R O, that at a minimum that we collect data under performance monitoring that looks at student, um, um, interactions with the S R O. So we can see who the S R O is interacting with as far as ethnicity, age, type of incident, things like this.
Any more? But this discussion, I don't, I have no, uh, no vote, so let's move to consent calendar. Um, the consent calendar is item A B four, human resources action report. Turn it put out. And we need to vote this one.
So the H R report was not, it was just noted there was.
Oh, there was.
So prior, when the agenda was adopted, the board was notified that we adopted the agenda with an amended H R report, though it is still part of our consent calendar, it was not.
Okay, so I need a motion. I need a motion, um, to approve all items except the A four, on consent calendar with the exception of the A four. Yeah.
I thought we're approving that one too. So the H R report is included, it is not separated. There was a change to it, but it was not whole. It's the entire consent calendar, all items, not.
All right, okay.
It is not taken separate.
Oh, okay, you don't move it up?
Uh, no, it has not been pulled. When I moved it, I, that's the whole consent calendar.
Yeah. Let me, we did one. Okay, next item, consent calendar, um, I need approve all the items, all the items of consent calendar with the exception of, you know, looking put out. So I need a motion for a, the consent.
I'll move.
I'll second. And. Menegas?
Okay.
Okay, you, so maybe just making a second and roll call, Donna Freeman.
I.
Angus Gonzalez.
I.
David Malcolm.
I.
Eric, Menegas.
All right.
Eric Chen.
I.
A motion carries. Okay, we'll go to, um, conference session, and you comment on the board, and, uh, tonight we start with just the method.
Oh, okay. Uh, first, congratulations to all the, um, individuals that we recognized tonight for their new positions within the district. I always feel that it's best if we can help people within the district move up and help them achieve their dreams and to move up their career ladders. So congratulations to all the new appointments. Um, also, we just passed the consent calendar. Um, in addition to the support of Mr. Chen and Carnegie Hall's music field trip, there are many other opportunities that were passed when we passed the consent calendar. It gives all students, regardless of their finances, to participate in additional educational experiences in the community and beyond the classroom. Some of those that were in the consent, um, calendar covers a wide variety of learning experiences such as science, computer. Covers a wide variety of learning experiences such as science, computers, program, mechanics, mechanical and chemical engineering. Debate and auto mechanics. All those were in this consent calendar and will, um, enable our students to learn from those that are best in the community. Welcome back, red carpet. Boy, that was fantastic. Never been on a red carpet before. Especially with the marching band and everything. Um, it was really great and it was fun and I thought that, um, the student participation. Really made it even better, um, especially with kids from all grade levels that were there. Um, I, I had the opportunity of seeing a seven-year-old this weekend at an event I was at. And she goes to Roland Elementary and she has a calendar, she's marking the dates off for August ninth. And she's so excited about going back to school and seeing her friends and her teachers. So it really is, um, exciting. Faster it comes, the better. Um, I want to thank Mount SAC for their contribution for our dual enrollment agreement, which is partly one of the items from tonight. A lot of people in the community might not know about it, but we have students that take college credit while here at, um, on campus. So when they go to Mount SAC or four-year college, they already have some college credits under their bill. And we're only able to do that because of Mount SAC's cooperative efforts with us. So shout out to Mount SAC for that. Um, student and staff safety will always be a priority of the board. And I want to thank, uh, Lakeo and others for the funding for COVID-nineteen screening. Um, Roland Unified will be, um, coordinating, um, this event. And it'll be funded by Lakeo and others and. Um, it just shows another area that the board is interested in, staff and student safety. Um, the last one is something that's, um. That's something I've been thinking a lot about. Have very many people seen the commercial on TV where, um, the lady is, um, thinking about french fries. And there's a bunch of hockey sticks in a barrel and she sees french fries right on hockey sticks and she runs over and grabs them and runs away with them. Well, that analogy is something that I indirectly was using in nineteen twenty fifteen when I first got onto the board. That kids, when they come to school, if they're hungry, they can't concentrate on what's happening in the classroom. They see the french fries, they don't see the hockey sticks. And it's hard to teach a young child or any student, um, that are hungry and can't pay attention in the classroom. And eventually that hunger leads to what this, what she does, she steals the sticks. Well, the kids become behavioral problems. And so. From day one, I've been pushing for universal, um. Breakfast and lunch program for all students. There's been so many studies that show that a well-nourished student does better in school academically, behaviorally, across the board. And we have been able to do that, um, we've been proved it quite a bit. Um, by enhancing our nutritional services, especially during the summers. Um, but we haven't been able to do it on a regular basis and as kids get older, there's a stigma that's associated with it. And they drop out of it, they just don't eat. Well, the silver lining of the pandemic has been this year, we're going to be doing universal, um. Uh, breakfast and lunch, all students regardless of their financial ability. So all students will be able to just take. So I done it, got the counselors from twenty fifteen. I got lunch and breakfast from twenty fifteen. So it took a while, but it shows that if you keep pushing, that it can get done. So I'm really happy that for the students, um, for this and a big shout goes out to nutritional services. And transportation because it is going to put a big load on. And I really appreciate their efforts in making this happen. So I really look forward to that this year. And that's all I have, thank you.
Angus.
Well. Good evening. Welcome back, all the students, teachers, classified and certified employees. And to my fellow community board. It is the start of a new fiscal year and I'm so delighted and excited to be back to serve and make a difference with everyone. We will move forward this year and we will be able to see the smiling eyes of students. And staff as we get back to in-person learning. Congratulations are in order for this. To Superintendent Dr. Julie Mitchell, Assistant Superintendent Dan Zixler. And Assistant Superintendent Management Mark for every new year. I'm looking forward, so forward toward the year. As I have great respect. To the new administrators of the fiscal year who were here tonight, congratulations, well deserved. We have the superheroes joining our team. And we will be a team player as you need us, we are here for you. And I am also looking forward to meeting with you all, hopefully visiting the schools. And Mr. Chen, congratulations. For your Carnegie Hall. Field trip with the orchestra students. I have one question, can I go with you? Anyway, may this be one of the most unforgettable years the district ever has for leadership. Accomplishment and possibility of moving forward to a better year for our students and the community that we serve. Like I always says, be smart and be grateful every day to try and make a difference, no matter how big or small. Bless others, we are educators. Keep expanding, great things are yet to come. Make a better world, shine and smile. Even though we're on, wearing our mask and be thankful for another day. Have a fun school year, everyone. Our leadership is more than a position. It is leading our students into a better future. I remain humbled and honored to serve. Angus Gonzalez. Thank you.
Thank you, Angus.
Mr. Menegas.
Thank you. And this is normally where I, I, I thank to acknowledge our student leaders that presented out tonight. This is where the flags are, our sites when we do the reports and our high school leaders. Um, it's something I like hearing, the voice of the student is very important for me, it's something that I think should be forward with. Um, and I like it, I was gonna say I missed it tonight and I did. But standing up during our public com- uh, comment sessions, Mary Ha and Kimberly Yes, high school seniors. Coming to the board, talking about what's important to them. And they really give that, that voice of the student, I want to thank them. And then even Ramon Rodriguez, who said, I think he was a graduate, again, a young leader out in the building. And really developing these, these students to come to talk to all of those of the organization, the organization, so I do appreciate them coming in. Um, I want to talk about the summer graduation, uh, I got to attend the summer graduation. I really want to congratulate those students who kept going in pursuit, pursuit just to get their degree and I'm very proud of them. They just didn't give up, right? Determination is, is what's important, I want to congratulate all those students. Thank you. Angus.
Okay, that's the. First, I wanted to say this was outstanding, I hope we can put this on the website, Julie. I thought it was great, so that anyone has any questions about anything, we have people right here in your video with outstanding. And I wanted to say congratulations to Heidi, Kirst, Johan, Danielle, Monica, Thalia. Um, I'm so happy that they were part of the Rowan family and they have their new assignment, which is terrific. Okay, and I attended the Rowan Heights coordinating council meeting. I spoke about what was happening at Rowan Unified School District, they have many speakers. We received a help update on COVID in our area, it was very interesting. I also attended Mr. Jay Lowman's two government classes virtually. I answered questions about being a board member. I talked about the process of becoming a board member campaign, day of the election, et cetera. Mr. Lowman showed his screen showing the agenda. I was able to explain that as a board member, we need to be prepared to vote by reading everything given to us, explaining the agenda and asking questions. The students had concerns about dress code and the eight-thirty start time. One student asked, what was a typical day of a board member? They seemed to be engaged and I enjoyed it very much. We approved a job description for elementary counselors tonight, which is excellent to know, we will be having counselors in our elementary schools this coming school year. Thank you, David, for mentioning I have a part of my campaign. We also approved a new certified job description, deputy superintendent administrative services. This is outstanding, Alex Flores oversees so many different departments at our U S D, congratulations, Alex. In the consent calendar, we approved an agreement with Paper Education, which will provide twenty-four hours, seven days a week help with homework. Over ten thousand students could use this online help with their homework, how excellent this is. Raise rural adult community education. I was talking to Rocky and he said there were many things for kids to sign up for, like watercolor, painting, soccer, basketball, et cetera. The Aquatics Program had one thousand five hundred kids enrolled. I remember going to mommy and me classes with both of my daughters. Also, they continued to take classes every summer and they became excellent swimmers at a very young age. The welcome back of the leadership team was amazing. There was red carpet and many cheers as the leadership team walked down the red carpet. With students and parents from other schools, the Galvez High School cheerleaders, board members and lots more. When it was over, the volunteers that were cheering received a wonderful breakfast to say thank you. It was great to see everyone, great job to the planning committee. Thank you, Julie and team for organizing this to be so special for the leadership team's first day back. I went to the payroll office in, in back of the district room number five and they gave me a tour of the office remodel. It was so nice, they worked so hard for all of us. Their areas where they work are great, where their desk can move up and down, et cetera. They are very happy with how it turned out. And the orchestra was invited to play at Carnegie Hall in April at the National Invitational Band and Orchestra Festival. Only a few high schools get this invitation. Thirty students will be attending with Jonathan Chen, their teacher and chaperones, what an honor, so happy we improved this tonight. I'm so excited about school starting August ninth in person, have a great rest of your summer vacation and a great school year, thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Oh. Good evening, um, you see I have two mic on my. Until, until we turn to me, you got that happen a little part in front of the mic. So, and until the community. That, uh, uh. Julie alerted me, so as we changed, I had to turn to the mic. So then, uh, then, uh, the solution is to put two mics on the case, so apologize. But in the future, uh, you do hear me, alert me and tell me and, uh, and I hope. Better tonight, if it's still not improved, tell Dr. Mitchell, I say it publicly and so I can improve myself, I apologize for that. So I, yeah, and, um. And I congratulate the, the leaders of, the new leaders, uh, that promoted tonight. Uh, and this new school year and, and all six, uh, as. New, new leaders start their new leadership duty, um, I wish them the best. And also, um, we approve the agreement, uh, contract and public contract for superintendent. And, um, the deputy superintendent and assistant superintendent, so. The approval of the contract means approval of your performance of your job, yeah. Very successful, especially, um, for the past year and year, you have, uh, we all. Um, fighting against the COVID, uh, COVID-nineteen and other challenges and I think we have done very well and everyone, uh. Your leadership and, um, the, the. The force, maybe, and it's learned, you are very sensitive for finding the, uh, the challenges from the COVID-nineteen. And we're doing where we are, yeah, thank you, and you deserve that. Um, and, uh, the. We have a lot of support from the community, yes, uh, after we chose that, uh, we receive masks, yes. Um, and personally, that's. The donation to the, uh, asked me, uh, to donate the mask to this, to our school district. And the day before, yesterday, I think the day before yesterday, um, a community member, um. His name's Henry and from Henryall Corporation donated forty thousand masks to the district and we appreciate that. So this is second time, last time it's only five thousand. And before I, I, um. Come to the meeting, I received another, another message, uh, the CDF wanted to see council member, uh, Alan Wu. Yeah, he donated ten thousand to us, to also, so that he's, um, I have, um. Passed the message to Julie, yeah.
I got it.
Yeah, you got it, yeah, so you, it's the, we, we. We have a lot of support from the community, we do good, we are. And, and we help each other to overcome the challenges. And, uh, for the past few days or a week, I want to share us. I, I did some study, I want to share with you, which is, I mentioned, we mentioned the, uh, few, uh, few months ago. And that's the study, the, the grade school rating, I mentioned to Dr. Mitchell. Because, like. And, uh, we losing students or retaining students because the, uh, the, the, the. The. The people, when they move, they, they, the. It was good district, how they rated, it was still great school district by, by the, um. By the Department of, uh, Education data. They look at the zeros or redfin, the, uh, the commercial, uh, real estate, uh, website. And they use the. A private organization, private organization called grade school rating. On that, they rate all the school by one to ten. Ten is excellent, top number, and one is poor, and one to three is bad and three to four, five is. Is, uh, is in the middle and the first score is eight, nine, ten. But, uh, I did some research of all, all, all other schools, I see. Some school, we. Surprisingly low, I don't think our district is that low. I think something's wrong, there's something is not there to us. So I want to, I want, so I, I did some research myself and how do they do this? Grade school rating and, um, and then according to their website, they, they are based on the three. Categories, the data, academic performance, uh, college readiness, equality, something, so. But then if you say what data they base on, what, what information? And also, Dr. Mitchell mentioned that they do use the comment, that people say like a yow. So more people say good work, we get more read, good read. So, but I think. Before we can influence them to, uh, to, to improve our rating or, or find out how they rate us. Um, I think we will have good things, we, uh, we like. To share with the community, put good things on to the, to the grade school. Put more, good words than we, than we, than our school rating be. Higher, better than, than, and hopefully they will chat more families moving to this area than, uh, it will lose students than, I think. Yeah, because, uh, that's a very common, people use this grade school rating for moving houses by houses, yeah. So the best, I, I, I had, I did some, uh, study on that. Um, I will share with you when I find out more, uh, if, um, if I, uh, something significant, I will share with the help of the mission. And, and maybe we, we can, we can contact the, contact the organization, uh, to find out what, what's their method. And, and provide them with data and, and we get a feeling on, on the, on the website, yeah, we can help us. So. And, uh, I, I think, uh, welcome back, welcome the, uh, uh, the leadership team and welcome everyone, school. Students, uh, everyone, uh, school, it started August nine, um. It been. One in the year, uh, out of the campus, so we're looking forward to see everyone in the campus. Thank you. Okay, so. I drunk, so need a motion to, during the meeting.
All of them.
And a second.
I second.
No call, Don Freeman.
I.
Angus Gonzalez.
I.
David Malkin.
I.
Eric, when he gets our, there is an I, motion carries, moving, meeting a joint, uh, seven fifty three, thank you.